Celebrating Black History Month by interviewing about 20 local heroes, African Americans, people of color who have succeeded all over and we're going to show it to all of our students, Kate's Well in February. So thanks for being a part of that, Tony.
Congratulations, Tony.
Latif also was a part of that.
Congratulations.
I may have a sad dollar mostly just to remember the family and maybe uplift them in your prayers here over the next couple of days, but it was five years ago yesterday that our family here in Northfield Center with a house was on fire and blew up and the four members of the family passed away. It was five years ago last night. And so I say that to remember them and to honor them and to even ask you to, you know, say a prayer for those remaining in the next couple of days. This is a hard time of the season for many of us.
Absolutely, Michael. Definitely in our prayers. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, excellent. At this time, I'd like to introduce our featured speaker for today, Eric Saylor. Eric is a Certified Senior Advisor with Care Patrol of Northeast Ohio. Care Patrol of Northeast Ohio has had the privilege of helping thousands of families through the tough journey of finding the right care for an aging loved one. Prior to joining Care Patrol in 2018, Eric was a sales manager for the financial firm, for a financial firm. Eric's love for helping seniors started at a young age through church where his family would go to nursing homes on Sunday afternoons to fellowship with the residents, sing hymns, and share some time in the Bible together. Eric has experienced what families go through on a regular basis with dealing with his grandmother who needed assisted living and grandfather required dementia care, now difficult it is to see a loved one go through the changes of declining health. Please join me in welcoming Eric. Eric and Barbie Jones.
All right. Am I up now, Steve?
Yes, you are. Thanks, Eric.
Well, thank you for that welcome, guys. And just want to say it's great to see faces, you know, in the COVID world, everybody's covered up with a mask and we don't have the socialization we normally do. So it's wonderful to see everyone. What I want to talk about today is really just try to give an overview a little bit of what's going on in the assisted living and nursing home world right now, since there has been a lot of changes the past year in that environment. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of that and I hope that time allowing then I can also dive in a little bit too to talk about some of the areas that Care Patrol works in and on a, on a daily basis. So I'm going to try to share my screen here. I do have a PowerPoint. You'll hopefully this will be a little bit easier to follow along with. And if all goes well, okay, so far, so good. So just to kind of give you an overview about Care Patrol. So Care Patrol is a free service for families. It was actually started over 25 years ago by a social worker and then became a franchise. And we help families when they look at different care options like assisted living, assisted living, memory care, independent living, and in-home care. We are a nationwide franchise. So there's over 150 franchises at this time. And our franchise that we have here, we've been in the area of Northeast Ohio for eight years now. Just to kind of give you a quick overview of what that looks like, we go as far west as Avon Lake, as far east as Ashkewa, and then we run south through the 82 corridor from Hudson all the way over to Richfield. So we really do cover that greater Cleveland, Northeast Ohio zone there. We're very transparent about how we are compensated since we are free service to families. We're compensated through the large network of referral partners we have nationwide. So when someone is placed into an assisted living or memory care or senior independent living community, we get a referral fee for that, much like a realtor would when they sell a house. I'm sure Renee can relate to that. So just to kind of start things out, I want to give an overview of what the long-term care environment really looks like right now. Obviously, it has changed immensely in 2020 from how it has ever been before. Some of the things that we'll talk about is certainly you may have experienced this, but there are restricted visitations to minimal to no visitations depending on what community we're talking about. There have been large testing procedures put in place as well as quarantine procedures for those when contractions are moving through one of these type of communities. So really in the nursing home environment right now, which would entail anyone who's going in for skilled therapy, physical therapy, occupational, speech, and so on, or someone moving into a nursing home for a long-term situation, it is essentially closed down except to essential personnel. So that would be the daily caregivers, nursing doctors, hospice, palliative care, and physical and therapy type people coming in. So they're really not having visitors right now, which has been very, very hard, as you can imagine, for the families. They've tried to do their best with having virtual visits through FaceTime or, you know, helping a resident use a tablet, but it is not the same, of course, of being able to go in and sit down at the bedside of one of your loved ones and talk with them. So very, very hard right now in the environment that's in the nursing homes. Most of the nursing homes have made the decision either to accept COVID patients or to not accept COVID patients. So there are some that are not accepting COVID patients. They're choosing to just stay away from that. But the majority have really not had much of a choice for what's going on at the hospitals and things. So the ones that are receiving COVID patients do have divided community. They have a section that is specifically divided for those who test positive for COVID, and then, of course, those who are negative. And most places are still taking patients for long-term and skilled care. Many extra procedures put in place, which of course is very cumbersome on the communities and the staff, but daily screenings when the staff comes in, they're screened temperature-wise. Some have gone to rapid tests that they're using and practicing social distancing with the residents there, temperature checks, and then even some have gone to full-on protective equipment that they wear on a daily basis if they're working in the, in the COVID unit. They are testing new residents prior to admissions. If you're coming from a home or hospital environment, they have to be tested. Usually it's a double test, tested at the hospital and then tested again when you're entered into the, into the long-term care environment. So really what that means is you're seeing a lot of, a lot of folks that are electing not to go into this environment. They're electing to go from a hospital and go to home. And while we certainly understand that, it's, it is a little bit of a double-edged sword because someone who should be getting six to seven days of restorative therapy is going home and maybe getting a minimal amount of that. And of course, that, that is a little bit of a setup for possibility of ending right back in the hospital. But at the end of the day, that's a patient choice that they have to make if they're willing to risk going home and dealing with that, or if they would rather go into a community where they know that COVID is obviously a risk. Assisted living environment is a little different than the nursing homes. While they have certainly still had to deal with COVID and put procedures in place, at this time, most assisted livings will not take a COVID positive resident. And again, I speak in generalities because there's hundreds and hundreds of communities in the area we work in. So it is ultimately up to that community what they're going to do. But as an overall look at things, assisted livings have tried to steer away from that for the protection of their current residents that are residing there. So to, to be admitted, you do have to be tested at the hospital. You're usually tested again upon admittance and then also most places are doing another test five to seven days later to make sure that that resident is negative. While they're waiting for that test and even after that test, most places also have a quarantine in process right now, which is typically 10 to 14 days for a resident. So any new resident moving into assisted living is going to be tested a few times and then also still go through a quarantine process where they would be confined to their apartment. All their care is still provided for them. All their meals are still brought to their room. They're still checked in on regularly. They're just not able to go freely move about the community during that time and they're not allowed to have visitors at that time either. Communities are starting to open up an assisted living for visitation, which is a glaring difference from nursing homes at this point. So that's very positive. I think you guys called it a happy coin at this point. So what that looks like is usually some type of scheduled visitation that you call the community with the day and time you'd like to visit. They'll tell you if that's open and then it's usually in a designated area. So it could be an apartment that they have selected to sanitize after each visit, or it could be a common room in the community. That is not every community at this point. It's starting to slowly open up. Certainly the vaccinations have helped with that a little bit, but also they had to do some things when the cold weather set in because initially it was just window visits outside and now that it's 30 degrees, that's not probable. So they've, they've tried to have some working terms that can be accommodated to both the families and the resident while still keeping safety in mind. The other good thing that is quite a bit different than the nursing homes with assisted living is overall, most assisted livings have had little to no cases in their communities. The ones that have had some outbreak have, have seen thankfully that there hasn't really been any of those that have subsided to it. If there is, I haven't heard of any yet in talking to the communities. And because they're doing a good job of monitoring the staff as well as monitoring the residents, usually it is caught quickly. So maybe a staff member has come in, their temperature is elevated, they're sent home and tested and then they find a couple of days later that, that staff member was positive. They'll then go through and actually test the residents, make sure that no one else has it. And thankfully, those have been isolated cases overall. So that is quite a bit different since they're not having to take people from a hospital environment that are COVID positive. That's allowed them to preserve the safety of their communities amongst their residents overall, which is, which is very encouraging in today's world. Independent living is a little bit different right now with COVID going on because really they're licensed through the state as truly independent. So it's much like just having your own home or your own apartment. They'll put recommendations in place for social distancing, for mask wearing, for limited visitation, but at the end of the day, those residents really did sign up to be independent. So technically speaking, if someone does want to have people come in and visit them in their apartment, the community can't stop that from happening as well if that resident decides to go out and go to the grocery store or go to the doctor's office or whatever you may have it. Again, they don't have any grounds to stop those seniors at that point because they're under independent living. So interestingly enough, we haven't heard of any cases where there's been a large outbreak in these type of communities. It seems that it's for the most part been pretty good in that environment. So what I want to just dive into a little bit here now too is to help you guys understand a little more of Care Patrol and our day-to-day function. It's a little bit in our introduction there, but really these are the types of care that we consistently are talking about when we sit down and actually have a conversation with a family member. It's usually the adult children of the senior, but there are times where that senior doesn't have family involved and we deal directly with them. So I just want to cover some of these today and give you kind of a highlight. We don't really have time to dive super deep into all of these, but obviously if you have more questions, I'll have my contact information at the end.
Excuse me, Eric. I can't, I can't see your screen. I don't know if anyone else can. Can you see it? You can? Okay. Everybody else can see it. Maybe it's just me.
Okay.
All right.
Heads up, Barbie.
Yeah, I can see it too.
Okay, it's just me then. Sorry. Continue.
So independent living, again, most of you guys are probably familiar, but we always go over this with families because there are sometimes misconceptions based on past experience or what they've heard, you know, through the rumor mill. So really, an independent living is, is what it says in its name. It's truly meant for seniors who are still independent. You know, maybe they are at a spot where their house is not conducive to their safety anymore because they have steps to a bedroom or to a bathroom or laundry room and they're just not comfortable doing that anymore, or they just feel like they're isolated in the house environment or that the house is too big. They can go into a senior independent living community, which would be ideal for them, get their own apartment or condo and, and have some social activities. They often have meal plans that you can partake of. Some are included in the rent. Some is just an additional monthly fee that you pay for the meal plan. They offer housekeeping usually every other week. And a lot of them have a partnership with in-home medical and non-medical services on-site where they could privately pay to have someone come in if they say need to help once a week with a shower or bath or something like that. A lot of the communities do partner with local transportation for seniors or the local senior centers to help the seniors get to and from events. Obviously a little bit that's changed right now with COVID, but in the normal circumstances, that would be something that was regularly going on. And a big benefit, which honestly is not talked about enough realistically, is it really does help prevent social isolation, which can lead to heavy depression. And sadly, we're just starting to see the tip of that iceberg, I think, right now with studies coming out of the effects of COVID on the senior population because so many of them did remain and are remaining isolated in their homes and we're starting to see the negative effects of that. So if any good can come out of that, maybe it'll just be eye-opening to individuals that being a hobbit 24/7 is not good for your mental state and especially when we're in, you know, darkened, gray, gloomy days of, of the winter months here in Ohio that can really impact them too. So that's a little bit overview of independent living. At this point, there's not too many places that are doing adult daycare because of COVID, but prior to COVID, these were very popular. There's several in the surrounding area here. But essentially what can happen is someone who is a caregiver, it's usually a spouse, for example, maybe they just need a day to kind of regain their thoughts and unwind, or maybe they need a day to be able to run their errands and take care of things. They can take that loved one that they've been caring for to the adult daycare during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, and essentially have eight to 10 hours where they can do things and know that that adult is being taken care of. They will do the meals for that individual, the senior, while they're at the daycare. They will also have activities that they do and medical and therapy services are available there too that they can participate in for the day. You can honestly do that as many days as you would like during the week, Monday through Friday, and a lot of them do have drop-off and pickup available too. So for the spouse who is often falls in that role of a caregiver or significant other who falls in the role of a caregiver, this can be a great option where they're not ready to see that loved one move into a community environment, but they do need a day or two to kind of just regather themselves, maybe get some rest and take a break. And then, of course, assisted living, really assisted living has changed quite a bit over the last 10 to 15 years. It used to be that really they were low-level care needs that were met in these communities. That's changed quite a bit. Today in assisted living, you really do get your own independent apartment. So they have that independence and dignity still available to themselves, but there is onsite care available for help with the needs of activities of daily living like maybe dressing or bathing or medication management, meals, laundry, housekeeping, transferring, walking, those can all be met in an assisted living community. And the wonderful thing is now also with assisted living, it is truly 24/7. So 24 hours a day, seven days a week, there is care staff available to meet the needs of that resident and that includes onsite nursing through either an LPN or RN that can help with medication administration, wound treatments, things that a nurse would have to do over a standard caregiver. As well with these communities, they do now offer access to physicians. They have usually a partnership with typically Cleveland Clinic or UH, who a physician will partner with them and send their nurse practitioner through on a weekly basis to check on the residents and they can have that covered under their insurance still. A lot of them also have dietrists and therapists that will round in these communities now too. One of the great things, which I often joke about, makes me want to live in the system living sooner than later, is that you get all three of your meals prepared for you daily. The food is very good. It's not hospital-style food. It's, it's very well thought out with personal chefs in the community. Obviously entertainment brought in, scheduled transportation. They do social events. Again, with COVID, those have been cut down a little bit. They are still doing internal things for their residents and then also outings. And that's all included as part of being a member of the assisted living community. There is some variance today in communities and this is where we often see a lot of maybe assumption taking place on families' parts just because of their past experience or what they've heard. So just to give you an idea, there are some communities today that say, you know, if you come in here and live as a resident and you get to a point where you need help with reminders and maybe a little bit of dementia starting to set in, that you're not appropriate for our community. Or if you get to a point where you need two people to help you transfer or to take a shower or something like that, that you're not appropriate for our community. Those communities do exist and we know which ones they are, of course, but there's also quite a few communities now that will do high levels of care. So they will do two-person assist, they'll do mechanical lift, they would do even some basic wound treatment as long as it's not greater than a stage two. And there are communities that are in assisted living that actually specialize in memory and dementia care as well. And that is a separate unit typically in the assisted living community. So you might have a community divided into two halves. One half is their traditional assisted living, the other half is memory care. Really, those are for those with advancing dementia, but it's a smaller environment. It provides a safe and secure environment as it is key-coded to get in and out of that section. And then the staffing that is in there is also specialized in dementia care. So they're used to dealing with the things that come with dementia that maybe the other, other residents wouldn't be aware of if they hadn't experienced, there's known someone to go through it. So they're set to deal with that. So really assisted livings have replaced long-term care, traditional nursing homes in, in many ways, which is fairly new in comparison to what it used to be years ago. Some of the things they still can't do, they still can't do a continuous tube feed if someone was on a respirator, or if someone had wounds greater than a stage two, which generally means it's down to the bone and it's not really healing. Those would all be things that, that resident would either have to go out to a skilled environment to be treated. If they graduated off those, they could certainly come back to the assisted living community. Or if it was deemed that they qualified for hospice, hospice could then come into the assisted living community and actually meet those needs in the resident and they never actually have to leave, which is a great thought when you're thinking about someone who may want to age in place, to know that that really could be a place that they do that. So nursing homes, obviously no one, a lot of times, you know, people have really bad connotations about nursing homes. There are good ones out there, you know, there's also ones that are really scary. So another benefit to working with Care Patrol is we do keep an eye on that. We're constantly in contact with them. We can help you understand maybe what's appropriate, maybe some of the places that aren't so appropriate. But interestingly enough, very few people actually need a nursing home. Over 70% of those that are in nursing homes today are there for financial reasons and not medical reasons. We're going to talk about that a little bit too, about as far as the importance of planning. So biggest difference, as you guys have probably experienced or know somebody that has, that nursing home is really more hospital feel to it. It's much more of a medical model, whereas your assisted living is much more of a social model. So it feels much more like home. You don't feel like you're just waiting for the next nurse to come in. You feel like you actually have your own apartment and then you can just get the care as needed. Whereas a nursing home, generally you're there for, you know, rehab time. And if you're not there for rehab time, then you're placed there long-term under Medicaid, which we'll talk about that in a moment. In-home care can also be a great option for families. It can happen in several ways. Sometimes a family member elects to be the person who is the full-time caregiver. Oftentimes it's spouses or significant others. But then you also can work through private agencies who will provide home care. There's two different styles really. There's medical and non-medical. Most folks probably just need non-medical. That's things like helping with activities of daily living, getting meals done for them, light housekeeping, laundry, that sort of stuff. And then medical would be maybe they have an ID or they have some type of wound that's being treated where an actual nurse needs to come in and provide that care. But those are available as well and we can help families guide through that process too. Million-dollar question. We always get, obviously, and it's very important, we talk with families, is what does all this cost? So just laying this out from Genworth Financial Survey in 2018, average daily rate for a private room in a nursing home equals about $8,000 a month. Average daily rate for a semi-private or what's called a shared in a nursing home is about $7,200 a month. And then average rate for non-medical agency in-home service ranges from about $20 to $25 depending on the agency. But most agencies today are now requiring a three- to four-hour minimum in order for them to bring it in. So in other words, if you just need somebody to come in and help mom get up in the morning and get breakfast ready and maybe that's only 45 minutes worth of time, you likely would have to pay for a three or four-hour minimum to make that agency feel like it's worth it sending one of their workers out there. So there's some pluses and minuses that go along with that. Average daily rate for adult daycare, which we talked about earlier, that's about $65 an hour, or excuse me, $65 a day. And then average rate on a monthly basis for a private room and assisted living is about $4,300. And you'll see the range here in Northeast Ohio is between 35 and 5,500 per month. The reason there's such a difference there in pricing is the way that assisted livings are set up generally as a whole, there are some nuances, but generally as a whole is because you pay for your apartment, which gets you all your meals and access to the community, the use of the scheduled transportation, the safety checks, the laundry, the housekeeping, that's one rate. And then depending on what amount of daily care you need is added on to your monthly rent. So you could have two people living in the same community right next door to each other. One may be paying 3,500, the other may be paying 5,500 because that second person needs a lot of hands-on care throughout the day. So really, how do people pay for it then? What does that look like? So generally speaking, may surprise some people, maybe not, but nursing homes, in-home care and assisted living are private pay. If you don't have the funds to private pay, then we're talking about Medicaid. We're going to jump into that very briefly for a little bit here in the next slide or so. So essentially, when you go in, you're using your own income. It could be assets, could be savings, could be investments. Sometimes we're fortunate enough to come across the family who's done some planning and bought into a long-term care insurance policy. Really, in a nutshell, it's, it's an amount that you buy, you pay a monthly premium, and when you're ready to go into a long-term care environment, you can cash in on that amount to pay for your care. An option that often gets overlooked that we bring up to families if it's appropriate is a reverse mortgage. I know there's some bad connotation around that, but in reality, it's actually the heaviest regulated loan that's out there today available to the public. There's courses you actually have to go through and pass before you're even granted to take this, but it's a great option if you have a senior, for example, who needs some in-home care, doesn't really have the money to privately pay for it, but they know that there's nobody they're going to give the house to when they pass. They can tap into that equity then and use that for their care and allow themselves to stay in their home and receive in-home care and have a way to pay for it versus maybe looking at an option like Medicaid that may only be the other way. Veterans assistance, we help families get directed to the right person through the VA for that. There is a benefit called the Veterans Aid and Attendance Pension that will help pay for long-term care. It could be in-home care, nursing home care, or assisted living. It's actually pretty significant. I want to go too far into details, but for a single veteran, it's over $1,800 a month that they can get. For a married couple where the veteran is going to move into a community or get home care along with the spouse, it's a little over $2,100 a month that they can get. So it's pretty significant and it actually does have an option for widows of veterans too, where they can get almost $1,300 a month to go towards their care. And then, of course, there's always your life insurance or life settlements that can be an option. That's really a case-by-case scenario depending on what kind of policy they have. But we've had situations before where there's been several different policies in place. They've already have a couple of policies to cover burial and funeral expenses. So it may be appropriate to look at cashing or surrendering into other remaining policies to pay for their care. So just real quick overview, this is a common question we get a lot too. Doesn't Medicare pay for this? So Medicare really is an insurance program run by the government that provides seniors and people with disabilities hospital, medical, and surgical benefits. So Medicare does not pay for long-term care, whether that's in-home, whether that's assisted living or whether that's nursing home. They will pay for short-term rehab in a nursing home. So you're going there for therapy, for example, you know, physical therapy, occupational and so on. They will pay for skilled in-home nursing care for up to 30 days. Most people on Medicare do have 100 days of nursing care, whether that's in-home or at the community level of a nursing home. But on very rare occasions do we see someone getting all 100 days consecutively. Generally speaking, it's about a 26, 21-day average. So a picture of that would be you leave the hospital, you go to a nursing home for therapy. While you're there for therapy, Medicare is looking at the therapist's notes on a regular basis and they're going to make a determination if it makes sense to keep paying for you to be there or to cut you from your time there. Now, if you get cut, they don't kick you to the curb, but what happens is you switch over to that private pay rate, which is generally about 75. Seventy-five to eight thousand dollars a month, seventy-five hundred to eight thousand dollars a month, so that would start being billed to you. Uh so we talk about that with families often, it's very important to have a plan in place, what's going to happen with mom or dad when they are done with their therapy. You know, if it's looking like they're not going to be able to go home because they need more time to recover, or because maybe there's some cognitive issues. Let's start talking about it now so that you're not scrambling uh the day you find out that they're going to be let go two or three days later. So uh well, Medicare does offer up to a hundred days coverage, very rarely do we see someone get them all in a row. It's generally around twenty-one to twenty-six days that they get before Medicare stops paying. You have Medicaid, uh Medicaid is a federally funded program, it's managed state by state, so it is a little different, uh state by state. But it helps those with limited means pay for long-term care. The difficult part is with Medicaid, it is not as easy as just saying, okay, I'm going to go on Medicaid now. Uh you have certain income and asset qualifications depend on the state where you live that you must meet. Uh I'll give you a general idea because I'm not a uh an expert in Medicaid nor I'm an attorney, but generally speaking for an individual. Uh you need to be at two thousand dollars or less in income per month, or two thousand and two thousand dollars or less in assets. Uh before qualifying for Medicaid, there are some exceptions to that, but that's generally where most people fall. So a lot of times individuals fall into category of having checkings and savings and investments that they need to appropriately spend down before being eligible. For Medicaid, and one way to do that is to spend it on your quality of care, uh which, don't have time to go into all that today, but that's something I'd be happy to talk about. If anyone that has further questions. Um a house is counted in most scenarios as an asset. If it was just an individual senior, for example, and they had a home, they would have up to about a year to sell that house, and then the proceeds need to be. Uh turned over to Medicaid if it wasn't used to spend down on their care. And there are some exceptions to this, again, I can't cover Medicaid in a blanket statement because if there's a spouse living in that house or. A caregiver, there are certain situations where there may be exceptions, that house can be kept. Medicaid does cover care in a semi-private room when you go to a nursing home, and almost all nursing homes do accept Medicaid. Uh and then also there are a select handful of assisted livings that work with Medicaid now. However, it's a separate type of Medicaid and you would apply for going into a nursing home, it's called Medicaid Assisted Living Waiver. And there's some, a little bit more nuances to that. So uh I wanted to try to keep this within about twenty-five to thirty minutes, I hope I'm on track, I forgot to look at my watch before I started, but. Just some other areas that we can help with in detail if anyone is interested, um we do talk quite a bit in detail about the Veteran Aid and Attendance Benefit. Long-term care insurance, life insurance, reverse mortgages, and then of course. The overall importance of doing planning with an attorney, things like having a power of attorney in place for healthcare and financial. Um Medicaid planning, if you know Medicaid is going to be something that has to come up down the road. Definitely recommend meeting with another law attorney to help you put that in place. So that when the time comes, there are some funds that can be preserved, maybe passed on to family and things like that. And then even to just additional planning resources, we have um attorneys that we work with on a regular basis, we're happy to refer to. Uh we have uh senior moving companies who specialize in going in and packing the items for the senior and then unpacking them in their new location. Senior Realtors, um we have a pretty big list, an eight years of working in the senior industry where we can. Uh hopefully educate you on what the options are, and then of course point you to the right resources to start that, those options and put them in place. Uh my contacts listed below, but I just want to say thanks again, everybody for uh allowing me to be a part of this group and to explain a little bit more about. What's going on right now in the care environments, um and then as well a little bit about Care Patrol.
Thank you, Eric. I'm sure some people have some questions, that's a lot of information um that is valuable to all of us. Uh we all have uh uh someone in our family that are getting older, we're getting older. Some of the members are older, uh so it's it's all valuable information, um who's got some questions for Eric?
Yeah, I have I have a question, um Eric, I think you did a phenomenal job in explaining something that is is very complex. Uh I I think you did a really good job of of helping us understand exactly what you wanted us to. Um and I'm going to go ahead and say that you're right, uh and I'm glad you went over some of those payment options. Between private pay and long-term care, I'd say that long, because I'm a financial advisor with Edward Jones and. Um taking a look as to what we can do to help people plan, be prepared and protect their assets. Is one of the biggest things that we focus on as we see people get older, because that eight thousand bucks a month. That can really put a dent into savings. And then that's when, like you said, people go ahead and they'll they'll get scrambled and start thinking. You know, well, should I go ahead and try to qualify for Medicaid so that I can get some of this subsidized? And you know, at that point, you're looking at what's called like a look back that that certain people do, so. Um no, I I think you did a great job of explaining that, and uh I thank you for your time today.
Eric, when is the best time for um someone to contact you, and you know, I mean, I've got some friends that uh. Possibly has, you know, family members that they have assisted living in their home, uh and they may be looking for other options or. If nothing's done, I mean, anytime really, at the beginning of when they're thinking about it, if if they're in the middle of something?
That's such a great question, Steve, I mean, honestly, the simple answer is anytime, um you know, the earlier you can plan on this, the better. To Jacob's point, and I'm sure others that would uh agree with that have made experience or gone through uh talking to someone. You know, oftentimes what we get unfortunately is we get the crisis situations the most. So the example I gave earlier where someone's been in a a nursing home and they've been doing skilled therapy, and then all of a sudden, you know, Medicare sends a letter and says. Hey, your your coverage time's over on Friday and it's a Tuesday, and they're going, well, what do we do, you know, mom can't even walk yet. You know, there's no way she can be in her home by herself, um and we're prepared for that, I mean, we've moved people into communities and emergency situations in twenty-four hours or less. Um it's not ideal, but we've done it, really, um it doesn't hurt to have the conversation and know what your options are as early as possible, so. You have parents that you think, hey, you know what, you know, they're probably five or six years away from this, but I kind of want to know what's out there. By all means, talk to us, we're happy to go through that with you. You know, our primary goal is to educate families on what's available and what steps need to be taken, uh and the rest will fall into place when the timing is right. So I, and then I will just say too, an encouragement, even though I'm young, uh it opened my eyes to the importance of having a power of attorney in place. Making sure I have my will done and things like that, because you just never know, I mean, you just don't know what life's going to throw at you. And we all think we got lots of time and something happens and we realize, oh man, I should have done that forever ago, right? And we think about our retirement, but oftentimes we don't think about, you know, our, what's going to happen when we age, you know, what's the next steps, so the sooner the better.
Excellent.
Do you need to fill out an application or have an interview, um how is it that you, or do you just make a phone call and get um an appointment or?
Yeah, so uh you give us one of your kidneys and we do a retina scan, um no, it's actually really, it's just a phone call. Um I mean, I'm a certified senior advisor and and really that's what I love to do, I love to advise, so pick up the phone, give us a ring. Uh you know, we we often joke we should have stock in Starbucks or Panera as many times as we're meeting people there. At a location like that, but we'll come to the house if you're comfortable with that, um if you'd rather just do it over the phone or a Zoom call, we'll we'll do whatever's easiest for you.
Is there a age limitation as well, or is it um like, so sometimes I know even my own stuff, although she's in another state, my aunt had uh. Advanced-stage Alzheimer's at age sixty-four. And so even younger, but do you still take, uh is that something age-wise?
Do, so that's a great question, Renee, so generally speaking, a lot of the communities may have an age requirement for their assisted living and maybe sixty, sixty-five. Somewhere in there, but there's always cases they're willing to look at, we actually did help a family of a man who was in a car accident. And had some pretty extensive therapy, but then eventually got cut and still needed therapy before he was ready to go home, he was in his forties. And we were able to actually find him an assisted living community that he was able to continue his therapy and then be appropriate to go back home, so. Uh that's actually something I should mention too, that assisted living can be month by month, does not have to be a, you know, you sign on the dotted line and now you're here for the rest of life. Uh generally across the board, it is a rolling month-to-month lease. So for someone who maybe just needs another month or two of uh recovery time and that help with daily functions, assisted living can be appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, if uh we're gonna have to cut this off, so we got a couple announcements, but if anyone has any questions for Eric. Uh please email myself or Debbie, we'll forward you as email uh and information, in fact, we'll forward that anybody's Debbie. Uh forward that on to all the members and uh, so if they need to get in contact with Eric or Barbie and they have any questions, they can get ahold of you. All right, uh also, uh for being, participating in one of our speakers, you get yourself a complimentary rotary tumbler. Uh we'll send one to you, both you and then Barbie, uh so email me your address if you want to ship it to the business or wherever you want a couple Tumblr ship. We're more than happy to send those off to you, we really appreciate the time you spent with us, thank you very much.
Well, I love coffee, so that's a great gift, and thank you guys, everybody, very much, I I'm sorry too, I forgot to really introduce Barbie. Barbie's our newest team member, so she's learned the ropes right now, so I did a terrible job already as her trainer and introducing her, but uh. She's been off to a great start already.
That's okay, I introduced her for you.
That's right, you got it, Steve.
Thanks again for joining us. Uh a couple of announcements, uh Dave, do you uh have an update on the reverse raffle for us?
The tickets are in, as you can see. I already filled it out, it's, I I definitely need email addresses. Legibly printed so I can respond to folks, thanks to Jimmy John's, uh sponsored the tickets. Uh unfortunately, Latif is not here, but definitely uh when you see him, thank him and go buy some pizza.
Did Latif uh pay you for that side this year?
He twisted my arm, he said, I, you don't pay for either sides, I'm paying. Distribution, uh we need to talk about distribution, how can, ideally, if everybody can come to me, that would be great. Uh that would save me, you know, forty trips out to somebody's place to get the tickets out. Be nice that everybody would take at least ten and sell them, uh we have two hundred tickets to get distributed.
How did you want to do that, Dave, did you want to have them swing by your house to pick up tickets, or did you want to drop them off here at SLC and have them pick them up? Or how'd you want to handle that?
Either either way, however it goes, I do have a sheet where I record who has the tickets. So I can track the tickets so we don't lose sight of where they are and make sure if we're missing something, we can identify it. I'm open to either way, uh I'm not always here, so if somebody does do a stop-by, I need to know that they're going to be here. So I can have the tickets available for them, or at Specialty Loverkins, either way.
Okay, because uh if we did it here, at least we're open, you know, from eight o'clock to uh five o'clock, and so they could come back anytime. I can uh have my receptionist with the signup sheet and with the tickets, and maybe it'd be easier for people to just swing by and grab some tickets.
Yeah, I can split the pile up and send a hundred your way, a hundred my way, and then we can disperse it that way.
Okay, that sounds good.
And if you don't know where I live, I'm in Macedonia, nine-four-six-seven South Skyland Drive.
There you go, everyone got that? Okay, thanks, Dave, let's get rolling with that, uh we want to take advantage of this extra time and get these, all these tickets sold. Um dictionaries for third graders, um we got about half of them labeled now. Uh my labeling team that are smiling up there in the corner, they ditched me and went up to Marblehead and they didn't take any with them, so. I've been labeling them on my own now, but we'll have those finished by next week, um Casey and uh and Joe. Let me know how you want to do that, distribute them, I know we have three elementary schools, if you want to give me a list of how many go to each school. I'd be happy to put them in my truck, uh you know, coordinate this with whatever teacher or principal at that school and uh. Uh get them over to them and let me know how you want to do that.
Yeah, and we all, all of our kids are back, all of our third grade kids are back, so I'll tell you what I'll do, Steve, I'll email our principals and I'll CC you, introducing you, and they can. Contact you direct.
Okay, okay, and uh we'll put together somehow we can get these to them, so within the next or two weeks, I want to get that over to them. All right, um as soon as the weather breaks, we're going to have some more storefronts to put up at our safety town, so we'll keep you advised of that. Um next week's regular meeting will be January nineteenth, uh next Tuesday. Uh we do not have a speaker scheduled for that, or do we, does anybody, uh John or Jacob, do you have a speaker scheduled for next week yet?
I think John's looking to answer.
I don't think we do, um Jacob, find somebody quick, thank you.
Sounds good, I'll get him on the list.
Okay, good.
Uh Howard, would you like to talk about your book? Nope, you're still muted, Howard. You're still muted.
Yes, I can do that.
All right, let Jeff Howard uh come in and talk about your book and business, and uh we'd love to hear about it.
Okay, I'll have to put something together, but I'll give it a try.
Good, you got seven days. Okay, great, so we, Howard's going to talk about his book, that's excellent.
I saw work on the week of the twenty-sixth.
It won't be twenty-five minutes.
Oh, okay, we'll give you uh twenty-three then. All right, and we have a board meeting this Friday, January fifteenth, uh so board members will be sending you over a Zoom meeting and uh. Um also, uh last month's minutes, so prepare for that. Uh anything else that I forgot that someone would like to bring up?
Uh Steve, is it okay if I thank the group for the last few weeks here on my end?
Absolutely.
Okay, terrific, um hey, thanks for letting me share, it was like three or four weeks, maybe it was a little longer ago, about our campus life, but appreciate so much the Rotary and its foundation. And uh even uh granting some dollars um over to the Lifeline Campaign and the causes of reaching students. In some mental health and awareness and checks and emotional stability, so thank you so much for the uh the foundation, the grants, uh some finances to make those things happen. Just appreciate you so much for that, thank you.
Absolutely welcome, Michael, thank you very much, or that's what Rotary is all about. With that being said, uh Debbie, if you could pull up our four-way test and Rotarians, please join me in our four-way test. Of the things we think.
We think, say, or do. First is the truth, second is a fair to all concern, third will build goodwill and better friendships. Fourth will be beneficial to our concern.
Thanks, everybody, uh board members, we'll see you Friday, I'm meeting adjourned. Have a great day, everybody.